We ran work up to podium please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Orlando from here, where all my friends come through. Keep following my Instagram. So this is a little bit of my background. I've own property here in Hackensett since two thousand one. I bought Franklin Gold and Fitzlins. That's I've been on couple of committees, I've been on walking ways in the ordinance committee. I had it done recently, but we are really tragic, say nothing. Paralyzing void in recent now. So if you're looking back. That's and give you a little bit of my agenda and others. This town, we've become divided. So it's ongoing a little much, but we're gonna come back together. My goal is to work for you now. You know, it's it can't be the other way around. It can't be us dictating what the townspeople need, you know. You could go down. I always said we can share a meeting and have have goals and write down what people want in this town. But what they expect out of this level. And my phone is always open. You know, I have just a foot phone, I'm a simple guy. You call me, I'll answer it, if not, I'm going to move, you can catch me. I can't catch that goes. Just not that kind of guy. Well, I'll tell you this, I'm an honest P. I'll give you an honest answer, okay, you can answer that. When you call, we'll find the answer. So I'm hoping that you'll vote for me in this call. And welcome, my sir, have this opportunity talking people.
Thanks, though. Okay, Ron, Charlotte.
I hadn't thought of that. Yeah, my name's Ronald Allen, I've lived here for over fifty years. I'm married, got three daughters. I had been running a business and raising three daughters, I haven't been involved with town much. But I'm a sensible guy. That's it, yes, what else, what else would I say? I'm hoping to make the town a better place. Like the last gentleman, this town has been fighting and it's time we get back to working with each other, so thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Ted.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Thank you to Lou and Ron for your willingness to run to serve our community. So my name is Nick Tez. I've been a member of the tri-town community for over forty-two years. My wife Tiffany and I have two amazing kids. And then we someone celebrated our fourteenth anniversary. Professionally, I am the service manager of a thriving service department. And some of my duties include estimating, managing small projects. And I think they're the operations. But most importantly, maintaining effective employee morale. And making sure that we offer our customers the best possible experience. I have to agree with these gentlemen, this this community has been divided. It's been divided, it's been disappointing to see. We've all witnessed it, and I think a lot of people can acknowledge the fact that. Most of the people, most of the players in this situation are very good and decent people. They just really chose bad ways of handling themselves. In my personal opinion, that's one of the major reasons that it's spying to run. Because I know we can do better. There's so many things that we need to address, and there's so many things that can be done. For example, waste management has been a mess, and I know the board's been working to improve that. Going all the way back to previous people before this existing board that we have. And it's not something that comes easily, but I understand it takes time to really find the best for what the community needs. I also think it's very important to provide good financial oversight, it's something I do professionally. I have to make sure that my team's successful, and there's no difference here. To be providing oversight to our community by monitoring the financial things that happen. One of those is the roads. We have an elected road commissioner. So the people elected that individual, but it's these people and whomever gets children. To make sure that money's spent well. And I greatly respect that, I I respect him for what he does, I think he does a great job. But it's still our job to make sure it's done right and find it to right. And there's nothing wrong with that, that's not conflicting, that's just right by the people of this community to make sure financially. We're doing what's best for our taxpayers. So. Ultimately, like I said, I decided to run for this position because we can do that. I would love nothing more than to see some of the people that have vacated their positions to reconsider. To reconsider. What they do in this community, I think it's important also to to recognize. Some of the past leaders in this community and some of the amazing things that they've done to help us be better. But we also have to have fresh ideas and be open to change, there's nothing wrong with change. When somebody tells me we've done that before, I say not with me. You didn't try that with me, so I don't ever want to hear that lie. So that's what inspired me to run, I know we can do better, but more importantly. We need to come together like like maybe we never have. And I know it's gonna take time, it's an ambitious goal for people to accept. The division for what it is. And start to see forgiveness, because I think it's the most important thing. We're raising families here, we're inviting new people to come to our community. And it's disgraceful what's happened on social media. And I fought very hard to get that changed. I understand there's people that have made bad things, bad decisions, they said the wrong things they shouldn't have said. But you own it and you move forward, it's key. But we should all work on these boards, people should come to these boards, they volunteer their time. They should be respected and appreciated. So that's why I'm running, we need to come back together. We need to get rid of the division, and we need to work as a team. So I really do thank you all, and thank you for considering me for this position.
So if I have any questions for any of them. With Ted. Lane.
Last thing, stick of stuff there, okay, so all three of you, this.
Well, like I like I specifically spoke upon, I think. I think people need to stop, they need to recognize and look internally. Not everybody's built free of this, you know, there's so many people who could have said things differently, there's so many people. Who could have done things differently, but we are a community, we are neighbors, and that is what matters most. So, you know, a lot of people that have volunteered on community boards and committees. And some of them have left, and that's so disappointing, because those resources are vital, people have a lot of knowledge. And there's gonna be more people that want to step up, so we we just need to be open, we need to listen, and that's what effective leadership is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have all three candidates answer the same question like we did in the previous?
Yeah.
I think that is the most fair way to do it.
Yeah.
Make it all win, make it thanks, we're gonna make that.
I agree with everything she says, I mean, I'm not on social media, I have no social media accounts, you're not gonna find any tweets about me. From anybody, anyone is or anything. And I think that's the only difference between V and and some of the candidates is. I'm a simple guy, I've led a simple life, I have a business I run, I know about paying bills. As he's mentioned, it's just a division that I saw and heard about from my neighbors. I mean, it's the only reason I'm here, and I can tell you, I mean, I was very impressed meeting Nick. I never got a chance to meet the other gentleman. And I thought to myself, if he gets if he gets elected, let me know. So, I mean, don't. If if I'm, I'm very because I didn't want somebody else up here that always had before. Was driving division. I I see a simple solution to all of this. When I'm there to the curb gates and St. Peter asks me. How I spend my time, I'm gonna tell him I spent my time helping with my community. Most people won't only here, some do. I've run two retreats in this community, one from Buffalo, New York, and I actually took kids to Buffalo from this community. And that's what I've been doing with my time, I've been helping some folks in this town. But I mean, looking at the candidates, I think this town has got good choices. And I I would be happy, he's the one that I've got for my week, even if I win, you know, so. Yeah, that's all I can say about it, so.
Answering the question first of all. There's two words that you can run any business, do anything in life, take it for its own structure, it's. Do you do those two things?
No.
Now, how to call. And when it comes to the community, first thing I would do is, like I said, I'd have a formal, informal, or whatever, meetings. And have a truckload of like crowsey pong of the town people want, but what their followings are. And then have have it come together, how we can meet, because you have to have. That's the only way the town work. East side has a given. And if you don't have, we're gonna have divided towns. And I think we can bring everyone back together, you know, as long as the ones will.
And maybe all of them up here and stand, some more questions guys can answer.
I have a question for all three of you, I'd like a smaller government, you know, I was wondering. How each of you would keep the government smaller than getting larger and larger?
You wanna go back, that was spoken initially or simply?
Talking dirt and talking federal speakers.
What's about her?
Actually.
So your part of her for going. You see, you can keep it small, more simple, bigger, it's one.
As long as you have.
I mean, go for it.
Go for it, yeah, I think you can stick to that one.
Yeah, man, you can talk about it, bye.
Go for it.
The way I wanted to. I see. I lost my train of thought, sorry, can someone else step in with these?
Yeah, sure. I don't know how sick government is now, that the town of Hackensett has, like I said, I've been busy running a business and raising a family, so I'm not really. Sure how big or little, I don't like big government, so I mean personally, so the smaller it is, I think it's better.
As the plans the select board works together, what we have, we want. It's when we get into fight, we may have to go for five ones. To offset, you know, you understand what I'm saying? But I my personal thing is keep it keep it like it is, get the townspeople back together. And then it will all work out. So I guess your answer is I would love to keep it this way. My my philosophy in life is keep it simple. That's what I try to tell you, you want to talk committees, you guys make it too complicated, the townspeople want to read what what we're offering. They want it simple, they don't want to call and say, what does this mean, what does that, keep it simple. You don't need to have a order on every question. Thank you very much.
So to answer your question, I've heard a lot of talk about the fact that we need a five-person board, and I think that if people conduct to conduct themselves properly. We can maintain the size of the board, when it comes to the size of government, there's really not much to a small town, other than whether or not you have a three-person board or a five-person board. I have a feeling that if you if you have the right people in place and they can actually work so effortlessly together. Then you can maintain, like Lou said, what we have, and I think that's the most important thing. Because nobody wants to see this grow into something that's just even more difficult to manage when they don't need anything more at all. I would I would state that I think.
Dale. I'd like to bring the conversation here back to sort of the reality that seems in towns. Caused the level of division in the town that they had, just that is the issue of roads and wrong contracts. Past has been for a long time that we do road contracts without competitive bidding for the most part. Recently, this past year, my understanding is the audit of the town, the auditor raised concern over the practices and policies. Of non-competitive contracts to a point where a single company received probably, and I don't know the exact numbers. Much of the summer road funds. I don't see how you bring the town back together if we continue on the path that we have. Of non-competitive use funds, I don't know how we demonstrate that we in fact are getting the best. Bank for our dollar when we don't engage in competition when it comes to large contracts, so my questions do to you. Is if indeed the auditor has recommended changes in policy whereby we're not giving such huge amounts of money to a single contractor. How will you go about treating the fash?
Well, first of all. As an estimator and what I do on my daily job. I very much have a good understanding how all this works. Now, you can time material work, and you can help it to go out, and there are times when time material works, and one of those is when there's trust. So I do believe that time material can work if there's trust and if there's good oversight by the select board. But if you're asking a specific question. If the auditors did this, and if they stayed in this, then you have to do what's right. But I can't I can't make a firm answer to that without having somebody provide that to me to me that says something that I can't see. But I do want to state that when there's trust and there's oversight, I I personally don't see a problem, given the current knowledge that I have. With time materials, but there is obviously a good time and place for bits to go out. We're talking about kind of stuff, I'm just talking about the summer roads, but. Specifically, if we're gonna stay on the topic of roads, I don't know that that has to be a divisive issue, it sounds like it's divisive. But it's because it's been made divisive. So again, if there's trust, if the people who elect, I mean, you gotta remember one thing. The people in this community did elect Ben McNeil. And they did elect the people sitting here. So if these people voting provided that much trust in certain people. Then if everybody's doing a job, then you should be in good hands. The expectation should be that, and there's any time somebody wants to, they can come in to get the factual information. However, like I said, if that if that paper's handed to me, you gotta respect what it says, so I'm open to that. Thank you.
There we go. We're gonna talk about the divided part now. Okay, we elected them to be our organization. He also has, let's see, farms, Ben McNeil Farms, you know, and they do the construction, right? Okay, this is where it gets tricky. If he doesn't get the work, them doesn't oversee the jobs, right? It's what's been in the past. Okay, when when the job bid out. To another, to another person. Then he did not do his job, he didn't go oversee the job as a road judge, because you. But, you know. I don't, you don't think it's butter. Well, he just didn't do it.
Because he wanted that other person who worked on that. So it's for you.
Right, you know, but I'm still, he didn't work together, he doesn't get the job, he's not. But anyways, I like them, I think them does a good job, oh, horse, you know, I mean, not him. Just, we we gotta get this town back, we gotta stop the subdivision, we gotta just. But this this is sour stuff. Because you gotta do it a little at a time, you can't come in with the ball and a trap on it and expect to make big changes. That's not how, people will fight two teams in the air. You gotta do it little at a time and make sure it's going overseas and. When the select board talks, and they talk to them, they give a figure of what's gonna cost. And then, yes, you can put a bid up, if it doesn't need them, then them gets a job. But it's it's just bringing the town back together, the town worked for years like this. I but I ain't saying it can't get better, I'm just saying you can't overnight. But you're doing a little at a time, so so that everything, everyone gets the feeling of how how the town is going. And it'll come together. Thank you.
I'm not sure of where all of that goes. I'm kind of nervous, so I I don't have a lot of opinion on what it is, I only know is if I'm elected, I'll do my job. If we're to vote on something for a a bid, that's what we're gonna do, whatever is the best for this town. I can tell, I wanna speak about them, I've lived across from them for fifty years. I've never seen them turn anybody down if they needed a hand. I've asked them for stuff, I mean, if I need a a truckload of gravel, he'll bring it to me, he never charges me. So, known them, he he's probably one of the more honest people I've seen. That I've dealt with, so I don't know, it's just, I don't know about. Them outside of doing contracts and all this stuff, because I've never contacted anyone, so. But he's been one of the nicest neighbors I had, so. That's it.
Have a chair, Lee.
Any of you handle situations where either an elected or appointed official town is uncooperative. Failed to provide requested information or failed to fulfill their responsibilities as in their elected or appointed role. So if you become part of the select board, how would you work for the select board to hold people accountable for doing their jobs?
If you don't, does the select board handle it now?
They're not. It's not slated.
Well, then. Well, then maybe that is gonna change, you have one that's new, I mean, he's probably only been here a couple months.
Yes.
I mean, so it takes time, and you've been missing one for several months. So once the three, well, you know, once all three have been there, no matter which one of us is there. I think anybody who's responsible for a job and to report it to the town, they should. That, I mean, that's just me, I mean, responsible for certain things, I have to report that to my, for the people I work on. I mean, it's like anything else, if you work with somebody and you're responsible or you're appointed to something, I think you're responsible to. Answer back to the people that you work for, so.
So, do you have a specific example?
It doesn't have to be a specific example.
No, I'm just curious, okay, so what you're asking is, does the person that you're willing to elect have integrity?
Well, selected or appointed.
The people that are on this board should be having integrity, so absolutely. They should be doing their job and will receive any aspect of somebody who's not doing what they're supposed to. That's plain simple. That could be, I mean, it it always seems like we're talking about one person when a lot of these topics seem to come up, I'm just throwing that out there. Or one crew or one, that could be the windows that are about to be opening here, that could be something Leanne does or her, with the town office, it could be anything. Anything that is on somebody's job description. Well, yeah, there's an expectation for sure, and there's an etiquette for what you're doing and whether you're doing it right or not. doing it right or not. So, yes, if you elect people based on them standing here, you're gonna lend you, lend them your trust, then they're going to have integrity. So, yes.
Like I say, there's two words that can go on structure in this. We also have bylaws from, at the town we go by. And if you do them three things and you work with the other two selectmen, not yelling, screaming, actually talk and get their insight on everything. We can make this work and we can discipline or recommend what should happen, you know? And then, I believe it's, it's up to the vote to get rid of an official, right? The town people have the vote personally. So there'd be an inquiry of all the townspeople, why they want this to happen, then we'll put it on the agenda. But there's this protocol on how you do everything. You just can't raise your hand and say, hey, I want it done now. That's not how it's done. There's always a certain procedure on how everything's done. And you have to follow it, good, bad, or whatever, you know? And that's, that's the way it is. Thank you.
Let me, you know, town officials over the floor is commenting Facebook on divisive issues.
I think it's unacceptable. I think, in my opinion, that people on this board and people that are employed through the town should have a certain etiquette that they follow. Uh, like I said earlier, I was the person or one of the few people that pushed very hard for unofficial payments, people of Hartford, to stop allowing fake comments or fake alias accounts and stop allowing anonymous posting. If we're having an expectation of our community members to actually be respectful, then somebody wants to say something, they ought, we ought to know who it is. We ought to know who that person actually is that's saying it. Number one, if they're real. And number two, if they're making such bold statements publicly, then they're gonna actually have to wear that on their face when they do literally step in public. So my expectation would be that people that represent the community in elected positions or hired positions, both, should actually maintain a proper etiquette. And that actually goes for going on there and talking about the community and going on there and saying things about, I mean, there's PSA, hey FYI, somebody that, you know, I, I can understand TSA is just an FYI type of post, but like we said, we're talking about etiquette. You elected the people, you hired the people to be up here and there should be a standard.
Well, you know where I stand on, on, uh, social media. I don't think anybody should have, uh, it's just your phone.
Well, it's bad for everybody. It stays with you forever, of course. It can be good for some things, but, um, that's all I'm gonna say. I don't, I just don't think legal should happen. So, thank you one hour.
Yes, as gentlemen, I, well, listen, as on Facebook, you know, comments, people know what's going on, so you do it. And, you know, before even the facts are out there. But if it's a town employees doing this, you know, they, they gotta separate professionalism from personal, you know? You can have your own thoughts and stuff, but you gotta think the greater good of the town. The town always comes first. The townspeople, you're working for the townspeople. The townspeople you're working for, you're working for them to make this a better town and hopefully bring the people together. So personally, I think you should have a strong, you know, moral base behind you and the person who's doing this. Thank you.
Yes. Um, do you believe that if people want change, that they should just go ahead and do it because of the town, they think the town needs it? Or do you think there should be a procedure that takes a long time to get to that new point? Because Hartford wasn't ready for what some things were brought. And, and that's where long-term progress came. How can we learn from this lesson and not go ahead to make wide changes in itself, those that have been working? I mean, it just never made any sense to me.
It was. Um, change happens every day. No matter what you do, change always happens. But I believe that it should be a community that, that changes. It shouldn't be one person pushing their ideas on everybody else. Um, every, if I was to be elected, every vote that I made on that table, on the board, would be for the good of the people of this town, not for my agenda or my friend's agenda or anybody else. It'd be whatever's best for this town. No person should be the bully of anybody. So.
Well, I think, I think it comes from effective leadership, first of all, to make the proper decisions on behalf of not who they are up here, but who the people are that put them there. And all it seems to me needs to be measured. You need to think about not just the one impact, but the many that through that before you make some change. It could be a simple change and like, it'd be a big deal, but depending on the severity of what you're trying to do, I, I guess you have to have, you know, we need to lead with common sense. And we also need to go through the entire list of impacts that something like that's gonna happen. We have to make. But I don't, I don't support jumping into lots of change because if you really think about it, this community doesn't need lots of change. If you really think about it, we can probably pull up a hand and identify five things. If we just focused on those things and, and tried to really reel those things in, we'd pretty, we'd be pretty good. We're pretty darn good right now. But, you know, the morale in this community needs to be repaired. And it's, it's gonna start with listening, but forgiving. You know, whatever happened, we need to think about how we can go forward. You know, just a real quick story. There are a lot of people that know who I voted for in the last election. That's okay. I made it public. I supported that particular individual. So they would be really surprised to, to learn that I actually met with Kathy Landry. We had a great conversation. There's a lot to learn about what we've been through in order to get to where we're trying to go. I think change is a good thing. We have to be open to change, but we need to do it right. Do that.
There's a change coming upon us.
One second, I'm sorry. So talking about change, we also gotta talk about, if you mentioned change, a lot of time to defend it, the townspeople's pockets. What is percentage of these townspeople that are on fixing those? You know, you gotta learn, you know, if you're at home and they tell you, this is your budget, okay? Then you know what you have to spend. But it seems like some people get in the government and they forget all about a budget. They say, oh, we can just spend money. Not saying it happens, but it does in other spots, okay? And so we, I think we should do it in a gradual thing. So everyone's on a basis. Keep it simple so the whole town's people know what's going on. Stop the arguing, listen to everybody, keep it controlled conversation, you know, raising the voices, you know? It's gotta voice, but it doesn't have to be over there. So I, I'm, I'm for change, but moderation. Because you go too fast, that's when problems really happen.
I might add that if, if you've got one person that wants this speedy change, they're not thinking about how it's gonna affect, it's gonna be first in the town. And that just isn't the way to go. And you're all speeding, I think you.
You also gotta figure, we just split the town fifty-fifty, okay? Fifty-four, fifty against, you know? You're just gonna bring, bring it together. You're not gonna get everybody to agree on everything. But if you can get up to seventy-five percent, you're called pre-dawn good. What's it, twelve hundred people in this town?
Team.
Teamwork. Everyone's gonna work together with a better intent.
Thank you.
Okay, please.
Uh, there's a change that's coming upon us, whether we wanted or not, and that is growth of the town. And I'm concerned about what you might think about land use in the town of Hartford and what you think about the comprehensive plan project, which is really evaluating land use. Because we really haven't had any policies enacted about land use. For thirty-five years, they've been suggested, but we never got to the point of zoning. And a concern is areas where growth is, where growth's not happening, effects of the lakes of growth. And, uh, and also the idea that if you don't have anything set, set up about where you want people to have more housing, you're gonna just have those three acre lots all along every single, uh, mile, forty-nine miles that we have in this town. And I don't know if that's the, the ideal, at least from a state planning viewpoint, it's not the ideal to deal with growth. And we've had, uh, in the last four years, from twenty-one to twenty-four is in the annual report, we've had thirty-six new residences. And in the first five months of this year, uh, we had six new residences. And I don't know what the building report just said since Jared's been here, but two of the new residences that was handed out, I mean, it was on the, with the city owners. So I just wonder what you think about land use. Do you think we need to have some zoning or what we should do in the comprehensive plan to deal with land use?
So as far as growth goes, I think that, again, that's, that's a measured change. And in order for us to make decisions without some good research, it'd be wildly irresponsible. We're a very deep town. I know a lot of, uh, a lot of communities, there are some in workforce, but a lot of communities have two bodies of water, at least three bodies of water. So there's a lot that goes into that. But you can still use other communities as a resource to see how they've done it. But I know that I've heard the top come up of perhaps going to two, perhaps going to one, so we can help with that growth and help have an impact on that tax base. Um, we say I'm open to, again, change, right? But it needs to be measured. We need to, we're doing the proper things that you'll think, thankfully we have a very committed group of people on the same board as others are knowledgeable. Uh, and, and that, that's a big resource that helps though.
Well, I'd just let you know that the meetings of the groups of the planning board, which I've been on for over ten years, we don't look at all the land in town. We primarily deal only with shoreland zone or the couple of subdivisions that come up. So the, the majority of the land in Hartford, we really haven't had a say about. And that's what the comprehensive plan is what we're gonna look at.
Right. And, and, you know, it's, it is sort of disappointing, it's clear that there hasn't been a ton of progress on that. I think that's severely out there. Uh, I do understand also it takes committed community individuals to mostly volunteer their time to do that. So, uh, I, I think it's a vital thing to think about for the, for the next ten, fifteen years. You know, that also means bringing younger people in that are going to hopefully lose their families and stay in this community for a long time, uh, who are willing to help with something like that. You could have fresh faces who have young kids that are willing to take that time and help follow through that issue. Because they, they're, they're likely gonna be the ones that, and they'll get the most. So it would be wise to continue to try and, uh, expand, not, not expand government, but expand the voices who are helping us build that out. So.
I don't know much about the plan that you're working on, uh, because I've not been in the town, um, government or anything to do with it. So, I mean, but I would agree with, um, Nick said, um, you know, growth is good as long as we're doing it at the right speed. Uh, if you, if you go too fast, we help grow. Uh, I know that if we have, we start looking at different things of ambulances and fire trucks and, you know, you get into things. There's a lot of potential for growth in Hartford, I believe. But I would just say that growth is good. I mean.
First of all, what we have in this discussion, we can have a look for government. She kinda threw this down the throat. So, do you want more on talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So now we can take out three Uprica House lots, we can make it twenty Uprica House lots.
Now it's small.
Okay? So we can, we're a sleeper town. We live here and we work somewhere else in special lots. Um, just, wow. We're at twelve hundred. Once we get to twenty-five hundred, supplying more, like water and sewer, different, different things that, you know, once you hit, once you hit a certain number of people, it's gonna cost the town a lot more money. But we, see, the population's coming from Auburn to Turner, Northern John. They're coming our way. Land is cheaper. They want a place to live. They wanna be out in the country, you know? So, you know, we can set up so only, so many houses can be built every year. There's, there's different ways you can do it, you know, and keep the population down. But also you gotta think about the school district. Our school will be holding so many people, so many kids. And once you start adding another hundred, two hundred kids, is the school set up for that? Probably not. So you may more of buildings, more this, you know? So I think to answer the question, we just gotta look at it slow, not jump into all these things. Cause, you know, you get the ones that have money coming into town and buy a bunch of land and say, hey, we have subdivisions. We gotta slow them people down. We gotta put the brakes on. Cause they're, they're only looking at the profit. They're not looking at, because they're moving on to the next project. You know, and what's left behind is the town, not theirs. So we have to do that. So I hope I kinda, kinda jumped around a little bit, but it kinda gives you the gist of how I feel.
Any more questions?
No. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Stand, board meeting. All meaning are Fletcher Richardson flag. Sorry. Third time you think to notify, I may have this case. Enters go home. Attention, uh, into this hall, go directly, fasten. Can I make a motion to two minutes, the July twenty-second, what meeting? And the July thirty, specialist administration.
I second it.
On paper.
Um, can I just ask one question about the meeting minutes? Ben, still here? Hey, did the roadside on Thompson Lane get put up? The one about placing two?
We've got three or four more cement posts, you know, for the end, yeah. Keep it going, roll it, you get it, while one, and then the signs.
We got the two that we, last meeting, we had two in the shed down there, you ready, Brad? So those, those two should be there, just, John, you know where those are in there? Okay. Yeah, we can get those up this week, begin.
Yeah. Things are small, so maybe not, charge us, so we're going to sure, he's there.
Okay.
Okay, now I wanna make a motion to two minutes, one, point twenty-four, twenty-five, two, five, six. Paper warrants, July third, and July thirtieth. Reserve account expenditures.
So, my question.
Okay, Emmy?
So I'm gonna forgot how long. In your motion, can you include the approval to extend trauma recreation reserve? This one shout, that's money for me from that base size, for recreation.
Like an approval to recreation reserve?
Uh, I'll second it.
On paper. Congress to ten report.
I'm with the hour two ten report, but I asked some information on the Buckfield High School Education Exploration Bet in the summer of twenty-five. The committee investigated potential financial differences for independently operating in Siskin region separately from RSU ten. They're by forming an independent school district, RSU ninety. Because of formulas and figures used in school finance change from year to year, we grounded all of our work using actual numbers from the current twenty-five, twenty-six, which is fiscal year twenty-six. Revenue, to determine the state subsidy for our towns as a separate district, we obtained ED two seventy-nines from the main Department of Education for what they named District RS United. We added this to what towns already pay and would share, and additional local sugar as part of the current RSU can electric. As we saw, we calculated the total fiscal year twenty-six revenue estimate for our hypothetical district to be ten million, forty-four thousand, seven hundred, twenty-six dollars. Please note that we removed costs, subsidies related to the construction of the Mountain Valley Community School as those figures are fully state funded and cancel each other out. Expenses, the committee obtained updated fiscal year twenty-six budget documents from RSU ten and analyzed each line to estimate what it would cost to operate schools in fiscal year twenty-six as is. But as a separate entity, when creating the budget, we included all RSU ten lines clearly itemized as part of the Buckfield High School, Buckville Middle School, or Haverford Summer Elementary College Centers. The committee then reviewed over two hundred and fifty budget lines for system-wide costs, which are not broken down by region as they are shared across RSU ten. These include things like nutrition, transportation, central office, business office, et cetera. We considered a similar size districts cost for practices in RSU ten and eliminated positions that we would not need as a smaller district. To the best of our knowledge, we estimate the grand total for running RSU ninety in fiscal year twenty-six as is as twelve million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. The gap, the committee compared the anticipated fiscal year twenty-six RSU ninety revenue against the estimated expenses to function as is. It would leave the new district with a deficit of two million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, ninety-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Understanding that the withdrawal process itself also includes its own one-time expenses, such as raising funds for the first payment of summer salaries and legal fees, which we, we felt it was reasonable to estimate that three towns separated would need to raise three million dollars in additional to what is already raised for school taxes. It is important to note that this three million dollar figure is what we believe it would take to separate and run our own system as is in this year's financial context. And that our estimates could be incorrect. Drastic cuts to staff and programming could lower that amount. Unforeseeable events could increase it. It is worth noting that the combined tax increase for our three towns over the past six years as part of RSU ten has been a total of eight hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars. Raising three times as much in one budget cycle is unrealistic. Knowing that the three towns could never accept a three million dollars increase, it would mean having to make dramatic cuts nearly a quarter of the entire school budget, which is equally unrealistic. At least at first, RSU ninety taxes would have to increase substantially while also cutting staff and programs. Essentially, our residents would pay more taxes and we would have much less to offer students. Um, the committee's recommendation at this point, unless the three towns select boards want us to continue, it may be time to dissolve the ad hoc education exploration committee. The communities must decide what comes next. Those of you who attended the last school board meeting about the twenty-five, twenty-six school year budget will remember that what we, that whatever issue we tried to oppose, we, meaning Buckfield Harvard Summer, were voted down. The budget passed by only thirty-six votes. There were many citizens from our towns, clearly not enough. We would also like to recommend encouragement from the towns and the select boards to encourage the residents of all three towns to actively get more involved with the school board and meetings, as well as gain more knowledge about the challenges facing the current RSU ten school board. We all have a role to play to better serve our schools and tax-based citizenry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me, the next air talk committee is, we tell the buck.
Sounds, sounds fine.
So who would dissolve the committees? Does each town individually decide they don't wanna have it or we start?
Buckfield started, Peggy, uh, Becky, Buckfield started the ad hoc committee, correct?
Yes, I like it.
So they, they would have to dissolve it. What, and is the next meeting in Buckfield?
I believe it is.
Okay. Is that it, Ben Hocke?
Okay, thanks.
What commissioners report?
Uh, I'll read it if you want. Um, there was, it was on the table as well, but I'll read it. The plan is to put a big bid package out to bid tonight's Sutton's meeting. We have been down one forty, and the plan is to pour a concrete header to hold the road from washing in. This will be done in the next few weeks with Pratt Hill Road header on the big cover. Kathy and I will be working on the theme of paperwork to get on a spreadsheet. So we're gonna see what we're doing on each site, and we'll have it ready for the next road committee meeting. We also have an issue on Samana's Road, an entrance was installed with no approved entrance permit. The guarding road will be repaired this week, there's a small wash on the hill. Can we do that or this? Yeah, can you belong next? Do we have to wait a minute? Yeah, so we have that. Ben, the, we got the roadside, I'm assuming there's some hoods. Uh, but it's on the agenda, so we can't do anything with it till our next meeting. Just letting you know. Okay?
Road committee report. Anybody here? Guess he left, okay, was here, Ricky.
The extension of what Ben reported, working on the three months, I guess, I already wanted this, uh, one of the old reports. And I guess Kathy and Ben, the big one, he's still out.
Tomorrow.
Uh, the road committee's meeting will
By the way, there's lots keep coming out there, if you didn't feel they might leave, they're gonna get filled with McDonald's votes.
Ben?
Yeah. Just joking back to, he's already getting older. He's in my church. Even more than that, I've
He won't Uh, he won't bury the earth.
Yeah, he was up there today, right?
Tomorrow.
Well, it's very close.
So.
He should be mine, but this is
That's, yeah, I'm I probably make a stall, that's why I gave that contact to you back in July, or whenever it was, July first. Did he just get it back to you, or did you give it to him before? I, yeah, there's nothing we can do, we can't pay him.
All we need to do is tell the community, pay, tell them it's all about him.
Can I see it?
He was there, I think all the history, all the blow up, it's all about.
Do you know what I'm watching? Same. Yes. Um, could you have him stall until they find out, cause the insurance and everything's good? If we don't have that, then we really don't wanna be
Yeah. Well, we're gonna make sure there's insurance, it's
Not here.
No.
Sorry.
First of all, what? Nothing? Good. Everything's kosher at the beach?
Good job.
Go with her. Make sure everything's good.
Why?
No burning, no burning bad
Perhaps we don't.
Packing stickers on the cars. CEO report.
Is that a front too? Everyone should have that, they've got the table.
Building permits, sweet plumbing permits. ACO report.
I don't want to talk. I don't want you to want to talk.
Land board report, admitted here.
Dude, I read the last night, I'm handling it here.
Hello?
Saw it last night. No, we got one. We got the cut.
But that's
All the minutes, sorry. Dan's here, so Dan can give the report if you want, if he has one. Do you have a plan to vote a port, Ben?
Uh, just, I didn't give you, um, uh, a written report, but I feel like it just said, uh, me. Sort of a sub-division. And it should be done by, yeah, shore land application, I, the process. And we're still in the middle of regtizing. I can't even go on, I'm trying to get that call here, they're both like following things about. See how we get that done. And also, it looks like we need to establish some, that's new or something that I definitely agree on, such as what a sub-division application process is kind of, we had not sure if it could be, first, first subdivision we're involved in. Uh, I'm not sure if we have a great forms, issues, problems. So I need something to answer this, again, this fall's of established right application process for
Well, I heard talk about that last night, but I didn't, I didn't know what you guys meant. What, what's the issue? Well, I heard talk about that last night, but I didn't, I didn't know what you guys meant. Wha- what's the issue?
We don't have, Peggy, you can speak up to them, Rachel, I'll tell this now.
So, um, the subdivision ordinance divides the process into three separate applications. A preliminary or a sketch plan. Then there's a full preliminary plan and then a final plan. And the, the, not the sketch plan, but the full preliminary plan and the final plan, we have to tell the applicant that they submitted all required materials and then we just discuss them. And we only have had an application form that Leanne provided in twenty-three for us for the first one we had done. And well, I've been on the planning board since two thousand eleven or two thousand twelve. We had not have a single subdivision company for us. And I think the subdivision ordinance was written in, most updated in two thousand ten. So I presume that that form preceded the most recent uh, update of the subdivision that divided into these different categories. So I've been trying to organize our paperwork to, to be consistent with the law by pirating from other communities. So.
That final application is your handed out last night, is that what they talked about?
Yes, yes, that's what it is. And the advantage of that, it's divided by, it says right in it, all the provisions in the ordinance as stated in the ordinance that has to be met.
Good. So, alright.
I looked around the internet, found this.
Okay, ad hoc planning committee.
We're still, we're still in the process of deciding what we're doing about that because, uh.
That's coming up in a minute.
Okay, alright, sir.
Ordinance committee?
Oh, we did it back.
Uh-uh, uh, no, we're meeting the thirteenth of August, what, sixth, right here. So. To German clear that with you.
I think I saw it on Facebook.
No, I told you.
No, I saw it on Facebook and then I checked my calendar.
So, yeah, so something I didn't realize either. The calendar you see on the town website isn't totally accurate because it doesn't put in, uh. On, yeah, non-town related, um, hall rentals. So if someone's renting a hall that night, it's not on that town calendar. So before you go scheduling a meeting, which I was guilty of the road committee, you should check with Leanne or one of the selectmen, check with the calendar.
What's the first?
Then she got. I'm sorry, anyway.
Peggy?
I just wanted to ask, the board's business would be doing the site plan review ordinance, do you whether to be working on that soon or not?
Right here, it's just a few, you know, they're.
They haven't had a meeting since we created the task force.
Well, let me ask. I'm, I'm going to work on that one particular thing. It's that big file.
Fellow priests, anyways. Firewater report? Nothing? Treasure report?
The, just that I sent down thirty day, Lee notices very soon, so pay the taxes.
Subterranean report? Nothing, so. Solid waste committee, what?
What?
Uh, who's the man who's on here?
No.
The solid waste committee may as far as if to the Canton transfer station. Because the select board tasked us with exploring options. And, uh, it's been set up, they're having, she's just as we are. But we were intrigued to hear that they are considering switching from a transfer station to another city.
Would you tell?
We, we had tons of discussion. But we're gonna continue to explore the direction. And I'm planning a trip to Leeds.
Sorry, you can, you can, meeting come out next week, isn't it?
It's the last place. If the solid waste.
Yeah, that's right.
So about twenty-seven. That we have, we want to visit, not say. We'll send you a, a, a question. With that, this brought up for this, you know, previous floor, uh, solid waste to do as a master work on. And I, I don't, we don't manage.
So that was a question. That was my question. Did we, they, the previous board select board looked into that and sent a letter to Buckfield? Did we get a, and some, did we get a response?
Not yet, because they're busy with R S U with.
Oops, okay.
I'm good. Buckfield, maybe. And then I heard through the grapevine that summer was definitely no. Yeah, but who knows? Leanne seems to think, I had an idea the other day, Leanne thinks that downtown office is good. We don't need a new one. I was thinking, if that happens, why can't we take some money, put it aside and have our own transfer station?
Well, that's why we're visiting. For you to hear how they were, how the people.
I mean, we got plenty of lean. Who knows? They probably won't take it. Clock the laws will be a compactor.
Yes.
Why, where's that?
Any reason. So.
Recreation committee.
Peggy? Uh, Becky, I mean, sorry.
This is a really good meeting, but, um, this session and what I have, um, should I, please, as we say, three, we're going to say it. Parents, children, little ones, and that are great to my. Repression video goes to chicken, I pray you do, period, game, table, and I, you know, fancy, and I will share my respects. And also, I'm in this coming Saturday. A first annual lobster dinner, prepaid lobster ten dollars will reserve each box's order. About to, um, the evening of the dinner, you can sign up at the town office. Um, twenty dollars for one lobster meal, thirty-two dollars for two lobster, fifteen for just two lobster meal. And we call it a cold slaw beverages, baked beans, um, hot dogs, the vegetarian baked beans for vegetarian. So that would be followed for the, uh, baking dinner. And then August twenty-fourth, we're going to have an event at the town beach from one to three. Bill's of San Castle, we have regulars and just a few hours from the train to get it, but it's where.
Good.
Thank you.
Open session. Yes, Dave.
Hey, before I speak, I have a point order. So, uh, I adhere that the document for speaking, publicating is still true.
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's also kind of free the MMA's, uh, order for open, oh, reading there. So I just want to know that, that the chair should make, he worked. And speakers speak to the chair. I understand it. And by definition, open sesame, anything with regard to the attempted actions or inventions are available. So as long as I stay within those rules, I ask the chair to tell your fellow, uh, select board member to refrain from any kind of threats to, or to infringe on my constitutional rights to speak freely about towns' actions. So we agree on that, I'll speak.
Yes. Go ahead. We've got three or four minutes.
Now they are. At seventeen years old, they speak on behalf of Julia, who has owned her property for forty-four years. The town trespassing damaged her own property and our will being are under denial. Being instructed to cease and desist for stating these facts is unacceptable. We seek resolution and accountability. We will continue to vote our achievement. Thank you.
Anything else, anybody?
Peggy, I was, I was trying to look at the building laws ordinance. I don't know if anybody paid attention to what came from N M A about all the new activities, but there's been uh, a new law having to do with, uh, the building code stuff in, in Hartford uh, that we have to address by the end of this year. I think it goes into effect July first of twenty-six. And, uh, I can't remember, it was discussed, but is it in the building law ordinance that an accessory dwelling, the owner of the property has to live in the primary dwelling because, I know it was discussed, but I can't find if that wasn't the final ordinance or not. But anyways, the new law says you cannot require the owners of the property to live in either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling. And, um, and when it comes to putting, we don't believe the whole, um, doesn't need growth zone, more houses is still kind of up in the air until we finish our comprehensive plan. But it now says that, uh, uh, you, it's not create, you're not creating a subdivision if you de facto put four units on one housing wise, only if it's five or above. So that was a discussion before that we would trigger a subdivision even if you put an extra one on. And the, uh, the third division is, that's kind of really overwhelming for Hartford, which would be if you have a designated growth zone and you do not have public water and sewer, you can't have a minimum lot size larger than the minimum lot size for our house without water sewer, which is only half an acre, twenty thousand square feet. So those, that's a big consideration about how we're going to do our planning for the future of Hartford, because half acre water, really tiny in a place that's had three acre lots. And also, everybody in the planning board has to have, has to, um, have specific training. They're setting up, they're gonna be setting up training programs. You have to go through this training.
You had emailed, uh.
Yeah, I sent that out to people, but, but I mean, I thought.
But did you get back?
What part?
Did you get back on training if you have?
No, I, 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 and I haven't had her back from that, but I, I mean, obviously it's new. So it's gonna be a while before those trainings are set up, I'm sure.
Sure.
Anything else?
Yeah.
A little bit late for question, but the lady I think you mentioned about with Jorick from S A U, it's a parish and said, she's still here, I think.
Yes.
Can I ask?
Yep.
Peggy, Peggy, so you mentioned a three billion dollar problem in order to make change. Is that a website problem?
As long as we keep the services, right, and everything has it.
So if you didn't have a three billion dollar problem, you could go ahead and make that change and have it function?
Good, there's a lot of, you know, cuts that you got made, walk on, and there's one more details available, walk on, if you wanna get it.
Yeah, 'cause I, at first I heard about it, I was curious.
I, I would suggest, like I suggested last meeting, excuse me, is going to that next meeting in Buckfield. And when, when'd you say it was?
It's Thursday.
Thursday night, 'cause.
Six thirty.
Yeah, they got the numbers and that's, I went along the one, I couldn't make the last one, but.
I think a lot of the cost is, I think they mentioned we own the buildings and school buses. Is that right? If we own the buildings, we own the school buses and we have to hire teachers, superintendents.
I think partial, they're looking into partial superintendent, not full to me, because of the contracts, keeping a lot of the teachers and managers that are already contracted to receive.
Nurses.
Right.
Means all that, we have to be hired.
In the long run, you know, who knows that we'll.
Right.
We've been, we've been talking, there've been a fellow there at our meetings that he went through this predicament. And he said the first year was hard. I mean, that was really hard. They had to scrape up. He says, but after, I guess it's, I think they've been eight or nine years now out of the district. And now he says, the thing about it all is they have more control than money. And that's what we would have. We'd have control of where the money goes.
Right. Yeah, this isn't about, I don't think it's about saving money. It's about control.
A little more concerned about how you.
Yeah.
Yep.
But would we be able to have an education system that services with the needs of our students? Or wouldn't we have to back it off?
Most, from what I understand, from what I understood is most of the services are mandatory, mandatory by the state. So we'd have to have it. So that, that would say the same.
So probably the next thing is, I don't know, it might be getting a petition around to the three towns to see. You know, if anyone walks through this, uh, stop.
We'd be a real petition to do, but after making research, we doubt my, people would not want to pay that much more in taxes. It would just be too much. And they would, students would get a less quality education as well, because of that.
Anything else you ask, Lou?
To raise three million dollars in taxes. Over, over the average household level.
Too much.
Well, it, it would be. Well, it's three million across the three tents. It's not three million just for Hartford.
Yeah, they see how much the film rates.
I, I, I have to do the math. I don't know what I'm talking about.
I mean, it's because you, you know, you have to give all of those.
I, I, you know, like. To me, that would be, um, being charged. And then this is, no, we're not watching, we're all, you know.
Really?
Right, yeah, I don't know. I heard, I've heard it both ways. I've heard it from the gentleman that was on the committee, who's like an administrator.
Comes football, he gets fallen, he never. I guess he never all.
Well, that was the biggest problem. They had to cut the football program and that disappointed a lot of the Dixfield citizens. That was the, the biggest gripe and he said that in one of the meetings, so.
Six hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars a day, so that's this, for, you know, twenty-five percent, they, they think that's.
That's not counting. So now you're going to Rome, we don't, we don't, this don't appear at all. So now you gotta go around pretty price a pyramid for our schools. Where, where you're walking to R S U ten, you get a whole grid. So there's, there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of things that aren't even mentioned.
Yeah.
That's, they're just, they're just little things. And then your insurance, you have no control over every lot, every year. You know, wages, you want very different, you know, just make it on bill, no control on that.
Okay, calendar reminders.
I just said one of the, oh, I was gonna request if the ordinances as they appear on the town website be updated, all in black and white, so you don't have all the crossouts and the red lines and the underlines and the grayed out areas, it makes it a little difficult.
Are you talking about administrative part two?
No, I'm talking about the building laws. Any of them you look at. That were updated. I think, yeah, that might be for that one too, but I'm just with the, the building laws.
I can work in with, but do you know what's that one? Okay, is it, is there a reason why I like that?
Um, I think if people would wanna know what's been changed recently, but I'm not so a woman.
Okay.
Okay, recreation committee dinner, this nine. Recreation committee meeting, August 11th by 15:00 PM. Special election is August 12th, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Sessions visits week, August 11th to August 22nd. Unfinished business, community residency grant application deadline, August 29th.
So I talked to, I talked to Jerry. I don't know, I think task two, we can probably take off. He said he's been working with Scott, Scott gave him all the blocks, all the training that he's looked into, with no charge. And he can't find it in the due charge, so I would say we take that off. Did you meet with Neophrax?
Yes.
How'd that go?
He's going, good. He's going to give you an estimate next week for your next meeting.
So the only thing we're waiting on is that, right? We can cross out our task four is Neophrax, you got the estimate for that too, we're good. So the next meeting, we can motion to approve this and we're good.
Make a few changes. Cook for.
Two.
Add a little bit more meaties.
Yeah. And I don't know, this is just a typo, but Neophrax okay?
It was.
Yeah. Other than that, I think everything went good.
Yeah.
Where do you recommend putting sign?
Over on the other side of the.
Okay, where we're talking, yeah, okay.
Yeah, a two sided sign, having a toss. Town of Hartford Municipal Office or Town Hall, that is.
So guys are wondering, we're trying to get a grant to put a digital sign on the wall, right? On the wall, post meeting time, meeting dates, other emergency information. Along with repairing the chimney, or the hole, remove the chimney, I mean, fixing the hole in the town garage. And also provide emergency notifications to residents via cell phone, text, or landline phone. Because it's set, we're getting that set up. So we need one more estimate and then next meeting we'll hopefully move along. You were going to say something, it started, and I cut you off.
Okay, next one, curbside collecting letter. We're writing Jerry, he's the new owner of Artis. Representative?
I thought you were saying owner, he's not, interesting, okay.
We're writing a letter concerning that we're not really satisfied of service we're getting so far. We hope this makes a difference.
You, I can read, you guys want to hear the letter? I can read it.
Great.
Okay. So we're reaching out to you today regarding the current situation with curbside pickup in town. Since due ownership, we've been receiving emails, calls weekly about trash recycling not being picked up. In many cases, citizens have seen the trucks drive by but not stop. This is unacceptable. When the new ownership was first introduced back in February 4th of 25, there were many promises made, none of which have been fulfilled. On line one of the contract signed March 4th, 24th, it states that the establishment of collection routes shall be coordinated with the town selectmen and provides sufficient notice of route collection prior to service. This has not been done. At the select board meeting that you were asked to attend on July 1st of 25, R2G's was asked to provide a route collection with a rough start time. The representative for R2G's who was sent by you requested town maps with town roads listed. This email, this was emailed to the representative on June 2nd, 2025, which was prior to the meeting. We still haven't seen the route collection as indeed of this letter. It is our understanding that the representative that was sent to the select board meeting on June 1st, sorry, July 1st, 25 is no longer with the contract. Please don't use that as excuses to why we haven't seen the route collection yet. Line 11 of the signed contract states that failure of any of the terms or conditions in this contract in a time and manner specified shall fit, such failure shall constitute a breach of the contract. It also states that the municipal officers may deduct and withhold from the contract amount, which shall equal the actual damages incurred. In closing, we are once again requesting that R2G's provide a route collection before the next select board meeting on August 19th of 25. This is received, the board will vote on whether to withhold funds until said route is received. Thank you for your time. I have to hear from you soon. So. Good question.
So, no, I guess. No, I was glad to see it came a little later, at 4:30 or 5:00, maybe this last couple of weeks, but they're rude. I don't know if they've got a rude or if they're telling people how, really, the road I live on is on Lakefield Drive, it's so changed, you gotta walk through around, come back down. We put all our trash at the end of the road. Well, last week, the truck came up the road and turned around, went back, and I'm looking up, because I can hear, oh, is anything coming up there? Half an hour later, it comes back up again. So I'm not saying I don't like the idea of not down the bottom of the road. I'd just like to know what they're going to do from week to week.
So wouldn't we? So.
They've been good.
I'd like to make a motion to send this letter to R2G's.
Definitely. Ask a question?
Yeah.
What I'm seeing is they're not separating, you know, what could fail.
So they got two sided, there's a middle divider, it has recycling that goes in one and trashing up. I know I didn't believe it, sorry for my own on, so.
Why, why I question that, so I thought Kathy, and it appeared they, but I did, I know they're doing it all. What from the back, okay. What I did, there's no dividing, just between one side and the other. And the blade, which used for compacting the trash, it was all subtle. How can you have, have two sides and you're using a single blade to compact it? That means that it's all one entity in there. It's not dividing. Next time they come, I'm good, give a picture. I said, I agree.
I've seen it. I saw it right out here a month ago. I'm not saying the one that came to your place wasn't, but I have seen this truck.
Small, small, uh, got it, with the line, they got it, you watch.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing, I'm just telling you, there is a truck out there that has it sticking to the.
What happened then was, okay, it's all going to go for tipping fees. You know, they're not into the recycling. So that's a big question. Are they doing that?
You say that, yeah.
I don't know. I'm not saying nothing because I've, I've asked the question and
thank you.
I can't get a straight answer out of it.
Okay, with the, town hall stove practice grant.
All right, so last meeting, everyone asked to look into electric stoves. I found one, it's a nice one. The only issue that I see is it's a 50-amp electrical requirement, which we don't have currently. So we'd have to run a new electrical feed to that, okay, which isn't that big of a deal. It's fire burner, it's all electric, it's not the induction like I found previously, so we can use any pots we have on it. The only thing, like I said, the only, it's 36 inches wide. Think that's about it.
My 24 dollars, I don't know.
I don't know. 340 bucks probably. I think it's 20, 27. We have 20 months, yes.
27 hundred?
It's, yeah, it's the exact number here. Hope it's a right spot.
I think it'd be our best route to go, we could get the any other room. So.
Yeah, I agree. I just, before, I couldn't find any electric stoves that were over 30 inches.
I just had a question. We have two ranges in there now, and that would give us five burners. Is there any advantage to having two ovens considering the kind of use this might have? I've actually thought about that, and I've heard about the possibility of having two 24-inch ranges. So I don't know if the electrical issue you mentioned before would be an issue with two 24. That's all crazy. Is having two ovens something you need, would want in there? I don't know why you had two ranges to begin with.
It was for the stove ton, right?
Those ovens are small.
Yeah. We don't have rocket two, Russell, we only have 48.
Two's at 48.
No, no, what we do, we have 48. The problem with those ovens is only 24. We're trying to get a bigger, wider oven.
Oh, you want one bigger oven?
Yeah.
Okay, that is fantastic.
I can't find that. I'll have to, I think it was like 2,800.
It's good.
I can find it and send it to you.
Okay, new business.
Hold on, hold on, yeah, hold on. I'll make a motion to purchase the 36-inch electrical range from Dave's Appliance.
I second it. I'll do it. So do you want to put the electrical out to bed or can I hire a regular?
I would just hire a regular one, that way he can, I have a funny feeling that Breaker's got one of those heat pumps on, it's one of them, it's a at one.
You want to make a motion to hire.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to hire, what's his name?
Greg Young.
I'll make a motion to hire Greg Young, do the electrical to the new ring.
I second it. All the favor.
Is this new system working? Can you guys hear us?
Is this a new system for the town? I was just wondering that.
Thanks to Mr. Nick, Tip, and Aaron.
Donation?
Yeah, is it broadcasting it back?
We just wanted, can hear much better. Thank you.
It would help with people, tip their, your mic needs to be tipped more towards the little bit. Lee Antic, so we need her, otherwise it's great.
The citizen that complained the most isn't here.
Task, if I have my own, I can call.
Okay, new business, spare metal business proposal.
Yes, I'll hit, you got it? Perfect, you want to?
Come up to the marine.
minus three range, minus.
You're right, I mean, they're looking, what are your addresses and where?
Yeah, so off the Devon, we're approaching, yeah, that one, there are two long sections up there, I think it's 10 and 11. It's about 60 inches combined. And I'm looking to procure that to use for a commercial intention. I have no intention of stripping the land. I don't have any intention for the next possible three or four years to put permanent structures there. The purpose is to be away from people, to conduct small blasting for educational purposes. So let's use some teachings for SWAT, ESG, law enforcement contractors, prevent use of dynamite, C4, decor, chop tools, communication things. It's a controlled setting, really learning outside, small levels. So we're not trying to move her, we're not trying to take out her rocker and flip. It's just a way to subtract this set of systems, do math and efficiently get practice using these materials as a safe. In the foreseeable future, I just want to tend to have a small arms, firearms range there of the war. Be burned as a construct plan to be sound, it's not helpful. We have an acoustic consultant that's going to try and bring the noise down, so the sound's up, so it's not permeating the people around. In the future, once we have better permanent standing and some fence lines, things there, we have to separate the explosive force. We might, but then we go public, but until there's a barrier, there's room for explosive range, just in case. So we have, it's kind of taped off. Most operations we'll be doing will be on weekends, between 9:00 and 4:00, they'll be early hours, late hours. The expectation of what we're doing there gets smaller. It's not going to be anything more than five pounds, they need to be separated by smaller charges so that we're not interrupting daily life, we're not pushing huge work on wildlife, we're not trying to contaminate waters or the wildlife. Then it's simply an educational part for mostly law enforcement. There will be civilian applications, people that want to head and seek. What it is like to use dynamite, what it's like to use, are these things that are very federally restricted.
Any questions?
Yes.
I think what you're proposing sounds pretty well intended, but I would be curious what you would tell somebody who owned property nearby who had concerns perhaps that they worked, they worked nights and they slept during the day. I can imagine somebody hearing this might have concerns.
Yeah, so there will be noise in the day. They do work overnights on weekends, the same as like they were doing at the time. The desk one, it's the same as if you had something, things like that, it's just going to be more. So explosions aren't going to be going on for minutes, hours, subsections, seconds. It's in one direction. And if you, it's a large fountain, which will probably murder half a pound, you're going to have probably 150 decibels. You know, there'll be some echo. If you're used to hearing gun shots when you're outside firing from down the way, it's very similar in seconds.
So reasonably comparable.
Yes, and it's, again, it's going to be spread out, it's all like continuous blasting because they're going to be getting hands-on demonstration of like, what is the weight? What is our delay? Running shop, there's going to be safety practices involved. We'll go a little size and grasp on the property as well, we'll give more security away, things can travel up. We'll still be measuring some to the ground, that way we can record what's happening, it becomes useful. So you're stating you would be 60 acres away from nearest, so from the nearest, from the nearest property that has structure, what we're measuring on the map will overforce management. We'll be going closer into the bog where there's stream of water, just to take some air explosive and keep us from losing a lot of energy. It's going to be extremely sad.
What's the name of the company?
Kent Ordinance Technologies.
I'm sorry.
Kent Ordinance Technologies.
Running.
That was my question. Oh, and you didn't say your name, I thought.
Kyle Kent.
Kyle Kent?
Yeah.
Ricky?
Probably was the parcel.
I think that you combined about 60 acres and I think something, I'm sure, that's.
Where?
Yeah, the loss number.
I think it was 10 and 11, I'm downing here.
10 and 11, okay, that's.
I've changed it.
Sets are 13.
I'll follow them, if you're going to set it back.
Oh yeah, it's going to be in the mess of that tree. So we're going to, the only type of change we're making is access for occupancy services. So it'll be clearing out if they have a theory address to anything in store. That's part of fire marshal requirements, we have to allow that people to check out any of the time.
How much do you clear it?
Oh no, I haven't done, get a certain dot for a wall, so we kind of spot this.
Sure. It's my, it's my understanding you have other locations around the country, correct?
No, no, this law, they were secure, you did. No, no, so I've worked with other, there's only a facility like us in Pennsylvania, and I want to tell them it's a lot of sets. We're just hearing the same. It is different from what they do, it's standalone. We're not doing like current military trainings, we're doing trainings that they can meet with law enforcement, with military trainers. Very scaled out, again, it's educational purposes.
Correct.
So it's meant more for practical and safe.
Okay, I just wanted to make the point that this is why we're going to be doing the site plan review thing. And we, the select board already said that the planning board would review anything that was non-residential before it was passed on to the CEO, just so that we have all the, know your outfit, the layout of what you're going to do and what kind of improvements you're going to have.
Yeah, so right now we've done no layout or no those plans, because we want to make sure it's consistent with the status.
I see, okay.
Yeah, we haven't gone spending thousands on surveys, doing all the. Yeah, we haven't been spending thousands on surveys, doing all the under stuff. We're taking the comparable plans another time. Before they got from town and tired of it. Because they have.
Uh, two, uh. What was the uh, Peggy, you looking it up with the ten and eleven?
Yeah, it's um, yes, R thirteen, ten and eleven.
R fifteen.
R thirteen, ten, I'm sorry, I said. R thirteen, ten, eleven. I'm look, I'm looking it up on the, on the. There's, there's no road ad- address for other than saying Devon Court Road. And it says one sixteen acres and one's forty-eight acres. Does that sound about right?
That's nice. It's close to that, yeah.
Yeah. But only one of them has road frontage and the other one kind of goes behind another law.
Yeah, they're adjacently touching a couple of spots on a large yard section.
Yeah.
Lenny?
What, what is the effect on wildlife?
Uh, so yeah, so effect on wildlife is gonna be consequential. Uh, it's either different construction or they have them in all their. So these explosions again, fractal of a second. They're, they're large impulses for a short period of time. So like if you have construction along the road and they're jamming for hours on an inconsistent noise, you're getting a lot of noise. Long period of time on a lot of areas. Ours are going to be a very sudden and short impact. That's like.
That'd be, I mean, finding it now.
Maybe four or five. Thought about it, any answers off the table?
Kathy, Lee answers the questions here.
Lee.
Uh, Peggy, what's, can I ask Peggy what side of the road it's on? Cause my daughter has like ten horses. Still trying to figure this out. Is it on the Peru side of the road?
No, we, we have not gone into any set of any kind of survey or anything. Slash one, we draw fifty thousand. We got a brand new town man, the blasting, they hate it. So they stopped everything. I didn't feel like surveying the town. I just spent a lot of time on these, just kind of walked away from inside of your truck.
You're what you're saying to me. This new town member in the neighborhood, it's like.
They have a quarry in town. They've been inviting them for like three years. They're gonna sue him to guard. A lot of quarries of all the. So it affects their values. So God, I think like, yeah, I'm not doing anything related to leak out blasting.
You mentioned when you get closer to the water or something.
Oh, so there's a bog, uh, there's a lot of bog in the.
What's contaminating, I mean, in that?
Uh, it's not drinking water. Uh, contamination would be the concern. The concern would be that alcohol. Because the way the sound's gonna traverse across water is not the same.
So just so you guys are clear, this will have to go in front of the planning board.
Yeah.
As well, so all these questions, they'll look into.
Yeah, this is once we get an approval for acceptance before we start reading. Drawing out, doing annual assessments.
We just, we just wanted to hear cause. We were getting information from the CEO and I wanted to give Kyle a chance to present his business model. But ultimately, this is a planning board issue first, so. They're the one.
Any more questions?
Dan.
Dan?
I'm just wondering where you are with your also, also just general information. Uh, I mean, are you into this real estate investment, maybe, and where you pass the business by the?
So most of the customers, I mean, millions are in that. A lot of what we're really doing is practicing door breaching. So they'll be taking something outdoors, things like that, taking C four, breaking little, it's gonna be very minimal house. The other side is gonna be mostly contract blasting, and there's people like that that are, you can die out to break clip and wall on the quarry. But it's a setting that those people can learn and get a trade in practice before they do it. Most people have never had dynamite. Most of them have never seen C four person, they've never seen or rendition of it. They've never held a blasting cap or a detonator, never seen an action here. They don't know a shop through biz. They don't hunt that horse or they don't know how any of these things are. And it's one of those things that when they go on the spiel. It's, it's under, underserved.
So you feel people outside of Hockford, up to Hockford?
I do expect for a day or so.
Would have. You don't work on the.
Yeah, so like um, this floor course is done in Pennsylvania. And uh, Tred has been doing that for about two decades. Uh, he has a setup where people were paid a week in California, people can enter on over to travel there. Same thing. For knowledge.
So sessions are weekly, monthly, if these people have come in.
So they'll likely be on weekends. Yeah, they'll mostly be on weekends. I don't intend to do much in daytime work, just. Giving daytime things. Schools are in session. Weekends are the most likely to be out and about on walls. VSP into very small windows of time where it's basically. Uh, but yeah, I would expect people will probably come down for a day. I expect a lot of local people to. Uh, I expect once we start opening it up to regular, regular people, there are a lot of people that are hobbyists that will watch on super down.
Look.
Have you watched? You've been on Devon Court, right?
I have not, not yet. That's on, I will just please do next week when we talk with surveyors.
So you expect a lot of fat?
Uh, we wouldn't have more twelve to fifteen people on it. The groups would have to be smaller than five or maxed at three, five for safety reasons, traditional purposes.
You're getting this right, like one hour.
Good to know. Yeah, I've seen a couple that are pretty rough on, you know, the laws.
Yeah, or.
Why not?
Uh, large sections of land, not a lot of people. So the idea again is to be as far away from people as against, we're not bothering people. And then holding space for us like being our friend. We go over the least like yes, four or four on a ten and five acres. Sound is gonna travel very. Hey, thank this is simple. Sixty acres, that much area, we're still getting here, which it's not gonna be paying for it if we're three or four acres. There would be.
My next question, my next question for that was. So you expect it won't be. Better than it is or like it is?
I'll have to see what the condition is, what it is. Uh, on the property, if you plan to make a road, we have to get assessed done, we have to have a forestry come in, these have. Have to have, I think it's. T and yeah, that's, do we have that? Any rest for fires or the gas, except anything we're ever had going. Uh, so I've wanted to separate, I've seen that right now, but I do know on that spot, we'll likely try and clear. Okay, a bigger spot, a twenty year spot. Two, that's not.
You didn't do it?
Oh, getting, that's a still thing. I have to still do a surveying.
So. And explosives, no, a lot of reference.
It's not gonna make any concern. Yeah, no. Uh, most, most things are traveling in a very stable, or around with dynamo travel market, there's goods or anything like that. Is already packaged, safe things that are gonna be shipped on regular commercials.
More questions?
All right, if there's plenty, I'd like to go further.
Yes. The drive time is gonna do. This is only about forty-five minutes for me, so it's very close travel. Uh, and being a girl's sensitive materials, I wanna. Uh, I don't plan to store any three particles there. That by town. But there will be times where we're transporting for a day. I have a score. So having a close enough that I can be there to secure where law.
Do you have employees?
Uh, so yes, so I have another individual, collects the last thing they say. On site, I'm gonna see, that then is entirely separate.
Do they do vocal questions?
Uh, here is a.
Let's see what she's going with that. We got a place to practice.
It might to learn.
Alright. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next one, ad hoc planning committee versus comprehensive plan review committee.
Alright, so last meeting, I told it later. By this meeting, I'll have an answer on this and this issue be put to rest. I spent hours trying to figure this out and come to the conclusion. That the best means or the best way to keep this comprehensive plan committee moving forward. Is to call it the ad hoc planning committee as is. Uh, so. I've talked MMA, um. We can't. There's a, there's a lot of ordinances that come into this. One of them being the responsibility of the planning board to create a comprehensive plan. Then there's also an ordinance for comprehensive plan committee that says that um. They're responsible for, they're an advisory committee to the select board. Um, I feel those two, that's what I said, yeah. I feel that the two. Are fighting against each other, the two ordinances. So at this time. I think we'll leave it as is, the ad hoc planning committee. The current members on it. We need more, um, but that being said, I think the ordinance, the ordinance committee needs to change. How this was done. Uh, Geralt Viness was on to something. And in the town meeting, the town voted not to change the planning board ordinance and take out the line, um. My book.
Show prepare conference plan.
Correct. The problem, the problem that I feel happened is. Daryl. Me and Daryl, and I don't mean this in a bad way. Kept explaining it and explaining it that people disclazed over and didn't understand what he was talking. When he was absolutely right and that should have been changed. So.
Wait, what changed?
The planning board ordinance.
You don't actually know the history.
Well.
Daryl didn't think the planning board should have anything to do with it. So.
And I agree.
Board decided to ask the select board to make that change. Daryl didn't ask that change. The planning board did.
Okay, well, either way, what changed that Daryl spent the majority of the town meeting is Quentin. And I think the townspeople just. Didn't understand it, cause I didn't, I didn't understand it. But I spent at least ten hours reading through ordinances, corresponding with MMA. And now I fully understand what he was trying to do.
So if it's an ad hoc committee, then at next meeting, we're going to review the rules to present to the select board, cause that's what the administrative.
So that was where I was going with that. My, my issue with the ad hoc committees is there's no governing ordinance, there's no rules or anything. For that type of committee.
Right, that's unless you have rules approved by the select board. That's what says the administrative ordinance for two.
Correct. So like I started saying. I wanna task the ordinance committee and I don't know how, I haven't thought this far ahead yet. I think we need to have an actual comprehensive plan committee. That works on this because this is not a quick process. This is a two, three, four, five year process. And when you finish it, the next one should be started. And the thing that's going is, is a turnover. The way it's written is a turnover every July first. And it's like Groundhog, maybe the, the whole committee could change.
Well, no, Leanne had pointed out, which was not in the administrative ordinance part two, that actually ad hoc committee members.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the comprehensive plan review committee.
Right, right, but right now, the committee that we have. We can't write any rules because we're gonna wait till an ordinance maybe get passed or could we have rules of procedure at least to have the select board approve for how we're functioning?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm asking.
But I think ultimately.
Right, that's.
Has to be changed, cause we can't be having ad hoc committees.
Right.
Just to have.
That's what I, yeah, that was my concern is there's nothing in any of our way of approaching the town that says we're gonna do what needs to be done every five years and every ten years. And I think, yeah, that just.
What MMA legal, MMA legal told me is, uh, we could call it a working committee, we could call it a working group. And they said nothing. Ultimately, that's what we're doing by calling it an ad hoc committee.
That's right.
So.
Lenny?
But didn't we just? Dissolve it?
No, we just changed.
Dissolve it why?
Was it yours or their or your plan?
What committee? Ad hoc review committee? I mean, the comprehensive plan review committee?
Yeah, that was suggested. He threw it up in the plan.
Yes, after I, after I. Well, it's already, technically, it's already dissolved. On, I forget the date, May four, on March fourth. You, they, they dissolved it pretty much from the point they wanted to be at. So.
So this is not new.
No. The current. It's basically staying at this, but. It's, I'm telling you, it's, like I said, I had ten hours in emails and phone calls and reading ordinances. And my brain aside, it was done.
No set?
Yeah.
Okay, ad hoc planning committee rules of procedure.
Oh.
I would like to say that uh. That they need written and they need to be amended somewhat. I think we discussed them in our, in that meeting. But in the interim, I would like to see how we pass. Well, actually, if everybody who's on the list shows up, we actually have, I think, twelve or thirteen members, which is actually a sufficient number because ideal is nine to twelve.
So what's your issue, what, the one we wanted us to prove last minute?
Yeah, I, I think they, I'd like to withdraw them. As, as a chair, I'd like to withdraw them.
Okay, well, well, what's, who feels gonna be changed? It's gotta be a reason you want to draw them.
I, I had seven deadlines. Uh, let's see. Resignations are filled by committee members in the same manner as the initial appointment. It was, it was reflecting the. Review committees' membership for appointing new people, if we needed new people, cause people resigned. And the positions remained unfilled because nobody stood up, then we could fill them from anybody in town who wanted to volunteer.
Who's we?
Uh, the uh. The ad hoc committee, I guess, would recommend members to the select board who would have to approve them. And then I did it right that way. Officers should be chosen annually at the first meeting and uh.
Because I think. We ain't cutting from our going on memory. I think the select board is the one that appoints me.
Pardon?
The select board is the one that's gonna point the new.
Right, right, select. I said plan where.
I said.
I just think that question is. The select board also determines the purpose of committee.
Correct, so we already determined the purpose in June seventeenth meeting. Right? And that, pretty sure we, I. I'm pretty sure we had a June seventeenth meeting or maybe it was July first, I have to look back to minutes. We gave you the purpose of the committee. And that was the right to comprehensive.
Right.
So that's been established. So.
I mean, other committees don't have rules of procedure. Why is this? Well, that's for the member, the membership and the voting. Still, just, just, that's why we need to do the rules, but I think they need to be looked at closely. There was two contentious meetings.
I think, I, I know what you mean, but I think this, at least till we get this ordinance written. So we have an actual comprehensive plan committee to write to do this. There's gotta be some type of rules on how this committee's gonna operate.
And there are folks who retire from plan meeting two thousand six.
Give me exactly, I don't want to.
Well, there's ten committees here. Why don't we just need rules about the people who proceeded for this one ad hoc committee? Because ad hoc is treated differently in the administrative ordinance than right now.
Also purpose. But it also, the, all the other committees have five members and possibly alternates and they have terms that expire. They do in fact out rules. Yeah, that's what this committee's doing.
Well, I don't know.
The industry, don't wanna see what's up on there.
Everybody on the record of the days, those are not for you.
Well, the expiration dates when the product is.
Correct. That's, that's not up here. I don't. Let me, let me re, come back to something.
That's what I said.
Send it to me prior to the next meeting to a market and blindside. And let me look at it.
Yeah.
Because I do think there needs to be some type of.
Right.
Governing.
Maybe until we do the.
Okay. Number four. Sanvianus Road, unapproved driveway entrance.
Hey, so I.
One more time.
I got a phone call about. A driveway just put in on Sanvianus. I went up there and I took a picture, checked it out, and sure enough. There is a new driveway put in, no cover. And another voter dropped the picture. On Sanvianus. So, um. I think them, them or CEO needs to up there. With their discussion.
According to the part of the CEO.
Okay, so CEO up to go up there and have a discussion with property owner and have it removed. Cause it.
Or send a letter, I think. I think it says. Resolution. Show number five. By mail.
Okay.
The violation, honey.
Alright, so you, you don't want that, Jerry, you don't need to. Okay, get contact Jared, have him do the. San Andreas.
Where is it?
Uh, I don't know, a hundred yards from the corner of Ricker Hill, on the right.
Right. Here, one sixty-nine.
I didn't get the mailbox number, there's no mailbox, there's no.
There isn't a driveway. It's, it's a farm.
It's a what?
It's a farm.
It's a driveway, you, you can see the picture, it is a driveway.
Okay. Do you even know who made it?
Doesn't matter, if they didn't put in for driveway entrance permit.
The person who made that. Sitting right next to me. Me? It's correct, in two thousand six, then road commissioner, Kathy Law. Commissioned her brother-in-law. To take down that rock wall, chop down two trees, and to go in.
Well, I can tell you that this was not like that. Two weeks ago. Three weeks ago, I know about that.
Right now, they're trying to fix, restore the property. That was created by the town. So that is heaven's two thousand six trustments of this town. There is no driveway. It's just like the other six. Uh, opening farm. Right here.
I'm not gonna argue with you. I mean, it's a driveway, dump truck drove in there, dumped a load of gravel, fast enough a driveway, I don't know what it is. Maybe just like. Whatever you want, but it's a driveway. So we'll have the, we'll have the code enforcement officer send a letter to the property.
Okay, crack your road presentation.
All right.
Fancy.
So just trying to. Put some numbers and some data through the whole crap. Issue. So I put it together on the slideshow. So started off with the bid spec that was written. A little back, but it's summer. Really fall. Um, I wanted to see it up there, I wanted to see it somewhere. Um, but basically, the bid spec was written, but it wasn't complete. Um. It didn't, all it asked for was a dry road. It didn't mention anything about digging out, was the rocks or stumps in the road. They only mentioned putting in, uh, four inches of gravel. So. Part of the reason why we rejected the bid. Back on June seventeenth was for this reason, and even the contractor that bid on. Said it was really hard to, to bid it, because the spec was so poorly written. Good. So, here's the next slide, the actual. Bid that he put in. Um. The one that stuck out to me. Was took three days, he has three days to complete the project. That seems like, obviously, that, that road is not going to be ready for paving now, in a three day period, there's no way, but I don't know how much he planned on bringing for equipment. Doesn't specify. The other thing that stuck out to me was. The thirty-nine. Dollars a cubic yard for the gravel. Now, obviously, that includes trucking, I'm thinking. But even, even if that does include trucking. Quick math, I didn't do it. Thirty-nine, we, we paid sixteen dollars a yard for gravel, and on the backup. All this information that I'm showing you today is all public information, you can go in the town office, request it, see it, so. I'm not, like, showing people stuff that they shouldn't be seeing. So, the bill that we got, the sixteen dollars a yard for gravel, we use. Um, or I should say, the McNeil Farms, Johnson Excavation, NADCO Supply. So if you take that off the thirty-nine. And you multiply that by. Anyways, it works out to like three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars a yard for truck. Uh, three hundred dollars a truck, not three, like sixteen yards truck, sixteen yards during the triangle. So. I think we've done a better deal with the sixteen yards of gravel. Um, so basically, this bid came to seventy-nine, one twenty plus, I had this answer, roughly eighty-two thousand, which is better than that. So here's some misconceptions that I've been hearing via social media, via phone calls. All the material that the road commissioner or Johnson or anyone supplies to the town is directly built to the town. Uh. Leanne has the bills, so when NADCO, we buy gravel off NADCO, we buy gravel off Auburn Aggregates, we buy gravel off Knops. It's all directly built to the town. It's not coming through McNeil Farms, not coming through Johnson Excavation, it's all built direct to the town, so they're not marking it up. We're getting it direct from the supplier. All the invoices for that job, or any job in town, is itemized, public knowledge in the town office. The road commissioner was being accused of double billing. I've seen the slips. The names of the people are on the slips, the labor rate. He's not double billing for his hours, his hours are billed separately as a road commission. He's not getting paid a thousand dollars a week, like we've been hearing. He got paid a thousand dollars for one, maybe two weeks, but he was there for forty hours at the road commissioner's rate. Now, had he billed us at the lowest labor rate for, that is approved at thirty-five dollars an hour. He's actually saving us roughly two hundred and sixty dollars by billing us at the road commission's rate instead of the McNeil Farms rate, so. I don't know, I don't know why people have a problem, he's. He's saving the town hundred, okay? And the other thing I heard is, after the money was spent, that it still isn't ready for paving. That's not true. So here's some facts. The total cost of the job was ninety-five thousand, six oh one twenty-seven. The road is in fact ready for pavement, as of today, whereas of the end of when we finish the work. McNeil Farms, Jeremy, Johnson Excavation, and the others that are on the project, removed the rocks and other items, stumps, blocks of wood. Mislenious stuff from the roadway. And they put eight to twelve inches of compacted crushed gravel. On the road. The bid only called for four. They lowered the culverts where needed. They created the ditches where needed, and installed road control blankets, grassy, and a layer of mulch. Wherever they disturbed. Here's the breakdown of what each contractor made on that trip. Johnson Excavation, thirty-three, seven, seventy-five, Neil Farms, twenty-five, five, twenty-two, NADCO, thirty thousand, nine, forty-four. Wood Farm, which provided, um. With the, the fabric. And, I don't know what else, but that's what it was. Uh, Brad's Hardware, Harris Farms Union and Crane Brothers with for grassy, which totals out ninety-five, six oh. Okay? Here's some of the pictures that were sent to me and I took from the job, you can see. Tried to see the depth, but there's roughly eight, twelve inches of gravel over the fabric here. Flows over here. Here's some of the material that was in the road that, again, wasn't in the bid spec to remove. It was just called to be grinded over, surface of four inches gravel, and then called down. More catches the rocks. Stumps, blocks of wood. You can see the depth of the road there. How deeply they dug it out.
Rocks.
Yeah, rocks. Yeah. This is a picture of the gravel that was used, read off the crusher, there's also a separate, the gravel that would be used wasn't crushed, was just round rock. While I drove down to the pit myself. Saw the crusher in action, all that gravel come through the crusher. So, we can see a breakdown of some of the road budget. How, as, as it is today. Total FEMA money we received, seven sixty-nine, seven sixty-four, eighty-six. We have, we have the new road reserve, summer road reserve, twenty-eight thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty cents. We have ARPA funds of sixty-six, nine, seventy-seven, oh, seven, which can be used for culverts only, that's why I got it in blue. And the paving reserve, a hundred thousand. If you use just for paving. So if you add these two numbers up, you get this number already, seven ninety-seven, seven, seven, nine. At the town meeting. We approved a hundred and eighty-five thousand. You take out the bond payment. You've got eight twenty-nine, seven sixty-six. And then of that, eight twenty-nine, seven sixty-six, we have five hundred and sixty-one, five thirty-three, which. FEMA money that is to designated roads, so. That money can only be used for the roads that are designated. By FEMA, when they came in inspected, I know it's a lot of numbers, but. So that essentially leaves, in the road budget. Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two thirty-two, seventy-six. That we can use anywhere. Questions? Make sense?
Yes, thank you for the facts.
So. In conclusion, yes, we spent more than fifty to sixty thousand dollars that was verbally told us, told to us by dinner. The bid spec that was written in May, June, twenty-five, was incomplete and didn't include the complete details with tasks at hand, we wanted that road to be ready for paving. That bid spec was not ready. We will utilize the remaining money that the townspeople had approved for summer road, rather than using it in the general fund. So when I say that, we use, um, forty something, forty-seven thousand dollars from last year's road budget that went. To this project, that if was not used, would have been put to a general fund and could be used. Anyway, well, the townspeople didn't vote for it, townspeople voted for that money to go to summer roads, so that's where it went spent. The town received a better product for roughly twelve thousand dollars more than the rejected bid, and is now ready for paving. Okay? So, that leads me to the comment section, does anyone have any questions?
Letting?
Yeah, was any of that work done? By the folks who showed us, we pay up on the previous one?
I don't understand your question.
There was previous work that.
Pidger?
No, I didn't have that dollar amount in there, so, yes, it would probably more money spent prior to, um. The numbers that I have, I don't have that total.
Questioned once, did, did these public have to repair some?
It's my understanding that one culvert had been lowered, possibly two.
Places that. We want to pull up those corners where, where it's right back to the first place. The equipment at work. With the red wrapper, we had a new, the fire in the bottom went over, went a lot here.
So.
So.
Yes. Correct.
Okay, I get your thoughts. Thank you.
I took a silly question. You use your FEMA money to repair roads that were damaged four years ago, which I presume you repaired but hadn't been done four years ago to me, but pass.
So, out of that, so, let me go back to this slide. This. This dollar amount right here.
Right.
Is two hundred and eight thousand dollars that we can use anywhere. The rest of it has to be used, that five sixty-one has to be used to the roads, and we have roads like, there's a section on Turner Street washed out. The city's been fixed, that's what we were talking about, with Kathy's argument again. So, that's what Kathy was talking about at the beginning of the meeting, where her and Ben were to sit down, was a stack of paperwork over in the town office.
It's a try to make the road. It's three stones, I guess.
Yeah, so they're itemized, there's Davenport. Wow, Swamp Park, there's roads all over town that still have money and paving designated to have worked.
Mostly to make them, you know, come up, solve the problem, doesn't we agree, I seem to say that.
So that's what I asked that dollar value right there.
Do you have any questions?
So does this help?
Yes, thank you very much.
Does it make sense? Because I'm looking, I don't, I, I don't, before. Everything blows up and people just get frustrated, what decisions are to be made. Um, I'd rather do this. Um, my goal is, I don't know if it will happen once upon. Depending on, but my goal is to have this by the numbers. As an agenda item that needed to do a presentation to explain, because this, this Facebook messaging and Facebook drama and. Phone calls and the talk between everyone, like we talked about in the, the meet the candidates, it's gotta stop, because. Numbers don't lie.
True.
So. And. Everything is public information, I mean, I got a spreadsheet, a sales spreadsheet, that I got all those totals off. Just dragging old and it does it for you, tells you everything you need to know. So. Like I said, no, I can't say enough, numbers don't lie.
Good job. Thank you. Crack your road paving bid budget.
So we're looking to obviously pay credit, we're putting out the bid, we want the bid back for next September meeting on the nineteenth, by five P M. So we can open up and award the paving project. To the little winner. Little bit of our choosing if it's.
I'm actually.
August. Uh, I make a motion to accept the application, the bid is written. Send it out. How are we gonna, you said you're gonna mail that? Everyone?
Newspaper.
The stone goes young?
Good job.
Good night. Thank you, guys, everyone. See you, Ben.
See you, Ben, see you, all of us. So we can build to fix crack those roads and. Our current budget expense, but we overspent in that, I found, so I need to move those.
Right.
Move it out of the reserves.
Yep, I make a motion to move the money out of the summer road reserves to. Uh, pay for the work done on credit.
Seconded. On favor.
Um, I do have questions, this, this is what we discussed, but. How do I know all these codes need, is there? Is there a list? I have no idea what we. Do they mean anything, do I need to know? Okay, some of the. I was looking through it last night and I read that one. Yes. Well. That's what I was asking you yesterday, my own town office, so.
I need permission to spend any reserve money.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that any reserve money for the summer roads can, can be used. Uh, I mean, at where?
Any use?
Out of the summer road reserve. Now.
Muches in there.
Well, you should have, you should have started roughly two hundred and thirty-six thousand.
No, the summer road reserve only has.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-four thousand, three seventy-four.
So what are you calling the two hundred and eight, the FEMA reserve?
That's FEMA.
Yeah.
There's paving reserve.
Right. Correct. Both.
It's five and three. Maybe could be, um, road reserve. In the paving reserve. In the paving reserve. FEMA is in, by what I think, yeah. She moves power.
Right there?
Seven sixty-nine?
Yeah, that's not, right, but that's not the, some of that's the designated road. Those are, okay, so that's it.
Small east, right there.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so. You're saying the motion that is made is for the summer roads and twenty-eight? Right. Why couldn't I, why can't we use it out of here? So I make the motion to use that either?
The summer. Run it now?
Well, I don't want to, every time I build one, I'm gonna have to do this.
So all future road increases we spent out of?
The FEMA reserve money or?
Two oh eight.
Two oh eight or the summer road reserve to twenty-four? So that way we don't lose everything.
Either one?
Yes.
We use the summer road in first and first.
Correct, yes.
Yep. My seconded. Tom Theodore.
Yeah, now we're back to some part, huh?
Responsible cat care contract. Annual contract. Yep. Nothing changed. Where are you?
What, what does this mean? It's on the last page. On the twenty, checking July first, twenty twenty-three.
It reads in the twenty, but it says covers July.
I get it.
Maybe that's the first contract over them?
Is that what it is?
Oh. Cause we had one in.
What are the four? I don't see what, what do they do?
Regular strain, same.
Cats, okay. So we have the money for it?
Yes.
And make a motion to move up the contract to a good one.
For seconds. We'll figure this.
Oh, yes. What do you want? Yeah.
Tax required properties. There's a couple of them, yeah.
Yeah, did you make the change in that first call? Good.
But do you want to move forward even though our ordinance doesn't match state law?
What's the difference? What's it, what doesn't match? This is interesting.
We have more options like the state laws as we, there's, there's no option for disowing, other than by a realtor. They, they just don't match or can't hold on, we can't wait forever.
No, I say, I say we do more. Can we make a motion for both when we're doing? I make a motion to go move ahead to the tax required property.
My seconded. On favor? So I'm gonna send them a letter, these are the ninety days.
Just if you're right, yeah.
And space fee is hundred days.
Do I have to do that? I know.
I think it did, it's to be finished.
Yeah, I think it kind of dealt, but it on the last one, it went to the small.
Should I start another one or?
That one. Well, I only got two minutes.
You may make seconded to me about to shut the other recording off.
We got the majority of it. Um yeah, yeah, so here's me now, because last night it just approving what they, it was only reopening it. And well, so. All right.
Four minutes for exit, exit nations.
Right. We don't have any reservations tonight, that's good.
Um, so the lawyer you interviewed stood in the rec committee or not? Civil. She wants to be learned in.
Okay.
Any others? Did you fill out that form? Oh, did she fill it out? You can do it. Teach you something. To speak to the chair. Go to the rec committee before I, I invite you.
That's fine.
Hi. May I have that phone number? She's not here, I was just on, which is, and she had.
Yeah, I can, I can get it for you. I don't have it right now, but I can get it.
You've been on hard.
Actually, actually it might be on here.
Yeah. All right, man.
Okay, so. Still need ordinance committee members, head here? No?
You did it. Review correspondence.
Oh, wait a minute, we're not done yet. Not done with that.
No.
So I would like to make a motion to appoint Leanne Donovan as the interim emergency management director till I can, we can find her.
Okay, seconded. Favor.
Congratulations.
Hey, so you also, you also need to find an emergency.
Emergency management director?
Yes.
That's what I was doing, I mean. Yeah. Calphos and Dan, he's still, don't you think it up?
Okay, training. Um, everyone by law is, has the option to go to the MMA, you can install. So we don't need to do.
October eighth, I'm actually wrong, yeah, so one week in October, I'm gonna hear.
Kind of maybe those here are your.
Okay.
To help. We will, now we will, I mean, there's not a pay.
Yeah. I didn't know, where is it?
See you next. Direct center.
Yeah. Oh, that's where everybody's located.
Wow.
That's where it says it's located, Stango.
I was in Bangor.
I was in the Bangor, I mean. Okay.
Um, there's the new law, I'm always on this, I think it's
I did, I looked it in there.
Listening sessions.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I get to be in all the chapters.
Yeah. This came in the first minute, I got, um correspondence?
Yeah. Very good. Or twenties? Oh.
China, I have this as needed. The grant application for sure.
Right.
Yep. I also have another grant that we can apply for, I think the deadline is September fifteenth. It's one of the options is security, that's what Jaylene and I were talking about. There's other options for mechanic. But I like to put that on the agenda.
Ooh, generators.
It's only up to three thousand now, we don't.
What about us?
We pay like seven grand.
Seven, eight thousand?
Oh, it's worth the three thousand dollars?
We just have to come up with a rest of them.
That thing's on the last list.
I know.
We ought to put in for it and see if we can get it. Yeah, what's a new generator cost?
It's a generator.
Plus guys, thank you for shooting it disconnect me.
Good.
Give it a take.
You want to add that? Yeah, it's kind of because of
Yeah. Thank you, Dan.
See ya. So like fourteen grand.
Yeah. Yeah. When is this being, September?
November fifteen.
Good.
I think the last time we got with them, the proper traffic stoppers, trying to do all this, but they're called. But I figured from cameras.
Yeah, definitely.
If somebody wants to get a hotel.
I can do that.
Installation and so then um, also was, to be able to
Per minutes or at all, uh?
Yeah, rules are busy.
Yeah.
Well, not the next meeting, we don't have a meeting before your next slide for a meeting.
Okay, perfect. Um, what was that thing?
How the contractor contract?
Yes, that was it. And I'll share that on the wall for a minute.
I can vote. Shall I be slapped in by the next meeting?
Right.
Um, open giving bits. What's that? Giving bits?
Giving bits.
Oh, yep.
Oh, we did something, we have talked about the, if we receive the response from R G S. Let you respond to the letter. Sorry, I'm gonna go. All right.
Okay, guys, now I'm gonna go in the second session later. Thank you for a great, equal, sensitive. Yeah. Thanks for coming.
Have a good night.
Bye. Good, you've been here six to nine, excellent.
See you later.
Really, see ya. That's the big question.
I'll make a motion during the executive session to sue M R S, M R S A, one check, it says being second four, five, sixty, stated for complaint.
Yes. Take it.
Good, John. I'm sure that's all.
Thank you.